The night where he's in, you don't sleep. I wonder who will wake him, bring him to his feet. Speak now, or forever hold your peace. There's a night where he's in, you don't sleep. I wonder who will wake him, bring him to his feet. Speak now, or forever hold your peace.
I'd like to call for the November 9th, 2021 work session of the Baron Council. Call on Councilman Tim Carroll to lead us a prayer. We would like to stand up to the Lord.
Good evening, Reverend. Heavenly Father, we have tonight, thank you for all the blessings that you've provided to us, and with your name as a city. We ask that you keep your calm hand on this meeting tonight, and that we have a good, positive benefit from all the citizens in all the world that we have before us. We ask for all this in your son Jesus's name, amen.
My pledge is to defy the United States of America, and to remove all but which it stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is a special presentation by John Robinson, by George Boston-Rodzien, by Gary McEwen. Gentlemen, if ten minutes is enough for the presentation, I'll set it at ten minutes.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm John Robinson, 327 San Jose Circle of Lake Park, Georgia. First and foremost, I want to thank you for allowing us this opportunity to be able to come before you this evening with this presentation and being thankful. I am a representative and a member of the People's Movement and Black Business Association. I'm here this evening to speak on the issues pertaining to the formulation of a partnership between the City of Allosa and the People's Tribune. I do understand that, from some council member, that there might be some hurdles with this. But I don't see where it should be, nothing that should interfere to the point that that we should be able to move forward and have a pretty decent relationship. I do sincerely believe that this could be a wonderful, potential relationship by sharing our ideas and truly being a part of a progressive city. A city without limits, it says on our towers around the city. A city where it has no limitations as to when it goes to progression. But the progression seems to be only for an elite group of people. It always seems that if money is being spread abroad in a manner that that's not appropriate to everyone in this city. A city without limits. When it comes to sharing the power of the upper echelons of businesses, it seems that the same people always get contracts and this kind of thing. I didn't come here to condemn Allosa, but to promote an idea, an idea that can lead to a better Vallosa, one that can share its limitations since it's a city without limits. A dream, a vision, a hope. We was told in a meeting that when we come here to speak to you guys, we need to bring a vision. A vision of something that can be inspirational instead of just coming up here actually making a certain request. But we have a dream, a vision of hope. Hope for the homeless, the jobless, and the hopeless people that's in this city. A city that's 53% black, where 40% live below poverty, and 43% of the 53% earn less than $10,000 a year. That's falling, something very normal to that. It's breeding around drug lords, gang members, criminal activities, and abnormal behavior. You know, in this community, we still have communities like the name "Kill Me Quick." It's that thing example of how we want this city to be disobeyed when it comes to people coming here to invest. A community called "Kill Me Quick." What kind of name does that have for a community? Who in their right mind would invest in a community that's called "Kill Me Quick"? How long can you sit there on Gordon, knowing that you got a community name with such a name, "Kill Me Quick"? Knowing that no one is going to invest in a community like that, and you got one called Little Miami that reflects the, some of the worst areas of Miami. We need to have an adjustment change in the heart of mind, in the way we think, and the mentality of minds that we have when governing this city. We want this partnership to be able to be a bridge, that can bridge that gap, that can be a gap of the separation of a social divide. Let's come together and see if we work together, at least for once, as a unified city. You don't have to like me, and I don't have to like you, but we do have to share it together in the activities of this city. We can work together, we can get it done, we can do it. It's not a question of my ability. We propose to the city, if we get this partnership, we're going to ask the city to request the federal government $250 million to revitalize the South Side, so that we can get the old businesses firing back up. Money's for the city, not for the people who live in them. And we want to have a governing body that can have membership committees that can help monitor the city without having the power that we always shared in it. We always have been excluded, and we need some inclusion. As far as our public records that I made the request on, they were, some of them is quite suspicious. I'm concerned about them. You know, I pray that we can be honest with one another. On the list of contractors, we have contractors that was used repeatedly, 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 and some of the same contractors get the money all the time. And we need to see if we can change that. I urge you to consider us being a part of this city. We like to be in partnership with the city, and we believe that it can be done. And hopefully, that in that town, we are thought, the way we think. We don't have to be so socially divided, but we got to be able to talk, wrong talk, not walk around with eggshells, not covering things up in a veil. We got to be open with one another. Vallosa have a ugly picture that have been painted of its history. We all want to go out of that. We can get beyond those hurdles. When you built the Patterson Bridge, it kept one half of the city. And those businesses down there were thriving businesses, and it need to be revitalized. And we want to be able to be a part of that, to have a voice in it. And praying that we can move forward as far as this partnership. This is going through my part of it. And I urge you to consider us being partners regardless of what differences that we may have. Like I say, you do not have to like me, I do not have to like you, but in outside of God, no one are the same people. And we got to look out for everybody. For it to be a city that's 53, 510, 53% black, and people earning less than $10,000 a year, that's definitely a need to change, and that's a need to change. And we are the ones that can change that. And we are going to be petitioning to the federal government, federal funds. Thank you so much for this part of the presentation.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm going to tell you that long the major, I was wanting to use the base was what the impediments, Jay Corrigan already returned about the city, but I'm not going to get into that. The record of Vallosa goes way back, and some people in the city believe that Vallosa drove in just fine, there's no problems. Just a bunch of lazy, shitless people who don't want to get out of the mud. Some people see that, and I hear that, even on radio sometimes. I'm going to be brief, but I have a collage of documentation about unfairness. And I'm talking about with black folk. A lot of white folk tell me, give me documents about Vallosa, ugly historic past. I have a written document, a lot of it came from white people, from white pastors, when I got here to invite them to their home. I'm not a hard man to get along with. This is why I have public state information. I'm hoping that Vallosa can move forward without any real litigation of coming up with the historic path leading back to what happened during the colonialism, what they did to and things. Back in the days, this book here, I don't know if you all read it or not. I had a stroke for 14 years, and I sold these books, and I still have a few of them in the house. William H. Hazen. In this book, he highlights what they had to fight for in Vallosa. They get rid of the war system, and they were successful. And a lot of other information, I don't want to talk about that. But I see you all have a long agenda, that's what they can be off to. So I'm just going to quit here. But I don't know if he gave you all the highlight from the attorney at the land, but we do have some attorneys that already have stated that what's going on here violates possibly federal law. And the sad thing about it from this BSA program, not only you, but under some of the others. We are trying our best to get some of those contracts. A lot of them on the council, especially the blacks, they'll tell us what's going on behind closed doors. But up here, where you need to make a difference, is when you need to make the difference. I know, we take it on camera that the road, and I'm asking you all, just do the right thing. And thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Councilor.
George, thank you. Good evening, good evening, everyone, Reverend. Before we get started, or at least I say my portion, I would like to ask Pastor Renato Nunez-Silva, one of our comrades that is no longer with us, has gone on the glory, that is Pastor Terry Kelly, one of the forebears of what we're doing here, he has gone on. So if for about two or three seconds you will offer him Nunez-Silva in his absence.
Amen. Tonight, I'm going to offer you, as my two comrades said, as a person who's offered an opportunity to correct some wrongs. There is a growing trend in American cities. It is the same across the United States, especially the major metropolitan cities. First, black neighborhoods and the spending of black infrastructure is toyed in as, it's non-existent. When I were out there 16 years ago in Vallosa, some of the same popes that are in the streets, right down on Lee Street, right down in Patterson, are still there. I can count where they are. Every time I go down Gordon, and I cross over that little hump right there, Gordon-Patson, it's the same horizon. I know that my car's come elevating. For 16 years, I've elevated and had to reland, like going to Duke, on the Duke's Avenue. That lets me know that there are some infrastructure issues. The second trend is the amount of city government spending is extremely lopsided. As my comrades stated when we pulled the numbers, just from what few numbers you gave us, was less than 2% of spending in the black neighborhoods and the black community in relationship to 98% of spending everywhere else when it came to public spending. That itself, that in and of itself speaks to disenfranchisement that our own city government is placing upon the people. When you were elected in office, you were elected to represent a total of us. As my comrades said, we may never get along. We may sit on opposite sides of the table today, and tomorrow, we may see things the same way the day after that. But we are all human beings, we're all God's creation, all God's children. We need to change Vallosa. What have we done? We followed the monies. Which neighborhoods are getting loans, which neighborhoods are not getting loans, are not being given to? Where's the mission-driven spending at? Where's the public spending in these neighborhoods typically for Vallosa in the last 16 years? I haven't been here as long as some of you have, but for the last 16 years, one section of town seems to get absolutely no help. We are at a very integral, we're at a very pivotal point with what Joe Biden has done in giving us the American Rescue Plan. For whatever reason, people like it or dislike it, the point is, monies have been given now to help those that are disenfranchised, to help those that are down on impoverished. Here in Vallosa, Georgia, right now, we have children living in hotels, and they're calling in the residents. We have children living in cars right now. And we have money in our government that can rescue those families, that can give them a loan, and we haven't done anything. We have children right now who don't need a full meal. Your children just came right there in the shelters that I deliver food to, and other pastors deliver food to. But I just walked into a room full of children that were eating leftover chili mac for a restaurant, that a restaurant donated to the shelter. And we eat punch bowl cake, and we were surrounded around trying to find Pepsi's and Sprite's to get them to eat. We're, we've got to do better. One, we found that the disparities in neighborhoods and investments are warming. In my opinion, evidence of what could be potential supplanting. While I'm not accusing you of that, the remnants of supplanting, which ironically is a federal offense, seems to be evident somewhere in the local spending. It's the reason that we're pulling all these numbers. You cannot have money budgeted in one place. Remove those monies and take special spending money and place it in those plates, in that place, and then use that other money to spend other places. We need to see our infrastructure fortified and not just the typical businesses. But we need to see all of Vallosa fortified. We need to see a reinvestment in the black community. We're the only community. Here's the trend that happens in every city. Less spending is done in the black community. And when the black community finally reaches the point where it's just about to fall apart, then the same city government that did not spend in the community comes by and says, "Look how nasty this community looks, look how bad it was. Maybe we ought to do something to revitalize it." And the word beautify and the word revitalize is a code word for gentrified. Because by the time these cities began finish beautifying and revitalizing these neighborhoods, the faces of people who live in those neighborhoods no longer exist. And simply put, those people that were once there are now picked up and moved to a new location, and a new sense of poverty is created. Ever since I've been a child, the railroad tracks have always divided the city. On one side of the tracks, spending always occurs, and on the other side of the track, spending does not occur. Vallosa is no different. The railroad tracks divide this city in half. And on one side of the tracks, the closest thing that I've seen when it comes to Fry Street in the form of revitalization, has been to come into a project and to change the front of the buildings to appear to match the demographics of the neighborhood. And even then, that project wasn't finished. Only 75% of that project was started, and there's still projects that hadn't even been touched. Some of these buildings are, were built in the 60s and 70s, when Kraken Build was still going. I heard about Kraken Build way back in the 80s, way, way back from my friends here from Vallosa, and I played football with it, how it was a thriving business and just pushed out of the neighborhood. And when that happened, that section of town lost everything that meaning it was. I'm simply petitioning you tonight to take your effort to partner with us to come up with a way to rebuild that section of town, my section of town. Now, let me take a step further, make it even more personal, my people's section of town. Because we are hurting. It's like watching someone drown in water, and you have the ability to reach out and grab them. And yet, we stand there with our hands out pockets and we're philosophized as to why they're drowning. Well, simply put, our job is to reach out and to grab that man and put him out of the water. Now, we partnered with Attorney Wardes, and you may not know him, but I know him pretty well. He's very adamant about this. One of his things that he does is he, he has attempted to make a difference in the office. And when he sees this form of disenfranchisement occurring, he steps in to help those people that have been knocked down get back up. So our reason for coming here tonight is to not come with a fist or a bat, or an axe, or to say, "Give me money because we're black." That's not the issue, because that's what the newspaper were writing. What we're pointing out is the disparities that have occurred in this community, and the amount of spending that occurs in this city when it comes to the black community and everyone else. We get less than 2% of the money. So we're asking now that we balance this thing out and find a way to make it that the equity and the equivalent of what's right be the same across the board, the same opportunities, the same spending. Now, what Attorney Wardes has done is, one of the things that's going to happen, what we've done is, we're looking at what is the opportunity of geography? How can we help make Vallosa better? But he's pulling the numbers of the spending that's occurred over the last 20 years, and we're pointing out the anomalies. And we're first asking to partner with you to correct these things, not go back and change yesterday if we don't have to. We can't put the bullet back in the gun, but we can come up with a new strategy. And if that approach doesn't work, then his next approach is litigation. I can tell you just alone, when I pulled the numbers, I can see some things that just made me cringe. I can show you in one of the previous budgets where there was money set aside for streets in the black community. And there was a projection to spend money on different streets. Then all of a sudden, at the last minute, all that money was gathered away and pushed forward to a revolution. That's the typical trend in Vallosa. A projection, a plan, it sounds good in the meeting, and then sometime later on, when all eyes are off the spending, monies are moved around and put in different places where they shouldn't be. You take, for instance, right behind, right behind New Hope Mission Avenue Street, right there off Gordon Street. Here you have on a dare, a wooden bridge that's still inside the city limits, inside the neighborhood. I'm just waiting for that bridge to fall in and for someone to get hurt. I've had someone go out and look at that bridge, and they seem to think it should probably not be utilized anymore, that it's outdated. We've been talking about that bridge forever and a day. These are things that, and I'm going to end here. I spent some time with the city manager, myself and John Robinson, we spent some time with the city manager about three, four years ago. And one of our objectives was to do the same thing we're doing here tonight, asking you to partner with us to correct this anomaly. And the most I could get out of him was that. Have you seen Weiser Baker? Have you seen the needles that are on the ground? Have you seen how dangerous it is back there? Have you seen the trash? Well, my wife, my family, and I, my church took one Saturday, and we went down there, and we picked up paper. Well, it made me wonder. You're the city manager of Vallosa, and after all this time, I've been here 16 years, and I've seen the destruction that's occurred in that neighborhood, and not for the people that live in that neighborhood, because there are very good people that live in the neighborhood. The problems that come in that neighborhood come from outside, folk that don't live in the neighborhood. And he said, "I didn't know all this stuff was back there." And I thought to myself, "How could you live in this city and not see this and pass by it every day and not wonder how I can make a difference as a city official?" Simply put, we're asking you tonight to take a look at the geography and look at the opportunity that can help correct what's going wrong.
Pastor, thank you. You three have time, in about two weeks, I would like to walk you through about four projects, and if you don't mind, a block of the time, we'll approach it from that side. Thank you, gentlemen.
That makes me, that alone, just there, that, just you stating that alone, gives me some hope that we will make some progress somewhere down this line. And I don't mean to guard it this time, but to not even be from here. I'm passionate about this city. I could leave and go home tomorrow, go back to South Carolina.
You're from here, you have 16 years of experience.
I love where I'm at. I was supposed to stay here one year and leave, and I've been here 16 years now because of the call of the people. And it hurts me to still be in the same spot. And we can swing an axe all day long, but it takes an opportunity for us to come together to the table and actually make a difference.
So, but last statement too, in defense of Mark as well. Mark and I have been with Weiser Baker three or four times, not with the statements that you made, but with opportunity. The city owns part of the land out there, how does that owns part of that land up? Out there, so that tells you right there, there's room for opportunity, room for growth, and room to sprout a community right there. I think that'd be a good opportunity, a good walking tour as well. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Before we leave, I have a question I want to ask. You have to run some by the presentation.
You can.
Thank you. Reverend Robinson, I was just listening to you when he was talking about you wanted to partner with the city of Vallosa. And you were saying something about you were going to apply for funds from the city as well as the federal government. I'm trying to understand, you want to get this funding so that you can set up, your organization can set up a satellite area or something to help the underprivileged or those who have not gotten a lot of, you know, funds and everything, in that, in a certain area? You're trying to be a partnership with us so that you can be able to, I guess, like I look at a lot of newspapers, I see how other people are always getting grants and getting support to help these organizations. And is that what we're kind of looking at, so you can get something like a grant, a bonus, something that you...
Well, that makes a long story very short. We want to act the city to petition the federal government for $250 million for the city, not for the people who live in them, for the city. And to help speed up the progression as far as the proposal, your objection plan, the plan that you have to revitalize the city. And we want you to petition for $250 million for the city, not for our organization.
Okay, you want the city to make that motion of action and go to the federal government?
Yes.
So we can provide for a set, I guess, say for certain areas?
Yes, for the South Side.
The underserved area that hasn't gotten a lot of things?
Yes, the underprivileged, the underprivileged areas, and help that, that side that the city need to grow up to.
Do you have any ideas, like there's some things you want to do to educate them or help them with their health and everything like that, or you got projects that you think?
Well, I think that right now, so, little bit, when you travel from the south and you come to the Patterson Bridge, you don't have a Patterson Bridge, and you look to the north, you see pure prosperity, and when you look around the line, you see pure poverty. I think that avenue in there, you know, where you find, you can run you in there. I think that need to be a tolerant area. I understand in the back of the strip mall or something, and maybe playing. We want to speed up the process, that's why we want to request that the city act for $250 million for the city, not for our organization.
But I'm thinking you want to place specific areas, you want to be specific.
Yes, 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 for the South Side.
On the south area, the town here, the valley there.
The low income area. So if we can put a curb and put a turn in. I have a lot more. I have a lot more wanting to say, but you got a long agenda today, and we can discuss this differently, and I have something here that I gave to your attorney, and it's from our attorney. And I can pass this somewhere.
May I actually explain the south side? Explain the south side?
Well, according, according to, I would ask that same question, explaining the south side and the need that we have about Robbo. If the south side is defined as, as, as representative of the city, I know you know what the south side is. There's, there's the three districts, uh, District one, District two, and District three. And that's what my partner in time had the south side. So we had him, he asked the same question. And him being the manager, I know that he know, and I know that you guys know what the south side is. And we know that the determination is based upon what he gave the description of, and that is the area which happens to be like, and it'd be mostly the south side of the city.
I, I look at it as the east of Lee Street as well, so.
Underserved area, not just the south, I say underserved area, you're addressing the city.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Better reference. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council, uh, item two, let's look over your packets and be ready to approve the minutes on Thursday. Item three, ordinances and resolutions, consideration of a resolution formally adopted, one twenty-one joint comprehensive plan, and Mark will present. Matt, are you doing it?
Sir, are you doing, doing fine? Thank you, Mayor. In your pocket, you have copies of, well, I consider some of the more important parts of the comprehensive plan, but to give you a quick background. Uh, since nineteen ninety-two, Valdosta has participated in county-wide comprehensive plan prepared in accordance with the Georgia Planning Act. Uh, sets out rules and standards of how comprehensive plans are put together, how they're updated and so forth. Periodically, the state changes those rules um, in terms of timeline and content. And so we just continue down that path as we are required to. Used to be every ten years, we were required to make a major update. Um, in two thousand and eighteen, that changed to a five-year schedule. So with the last time we did an update was in twenty sixteen, which was a ten-year period from two thousand and six. Um, since two thousand and six, the state standards have changed twice. Uh, but more importantly, twenty sixteen started a five-year update cycle, which brought us to twenty twenty-one. So for the past nine months, we have been going through the process of updating the twenty sixteen adopted comprehensive plan uh, with five other local governments that we share with the county with. So it's the county and six cities. Um, included in that, uh, the most important part is the community work program, uh, which the copy of the proposed is in your packet. Uh, that is an update for the twenty sixteen version, a lot of projects were carried over, a few things have been added. Uh, the more important, which just to hit the highlight, is the broadband element is now a requirement of comprehensive plans. Um, the Southern Georgia Regional Commission is working on a draft ordinance and template uh, for all of us to be compliant with that. Those items are listed on the last page of that chart. Uh, but to keep in mind, this is a hundred and fifty-four page document that is truly countywide, it has all our stuff in it. Uh, I did not want to burden you with your packet with a hundred and fifty-four items to look through. But that is available on the regional commission's website, uh, both the current draft as well as the twenty sixteen version for comparison. But I gave you the cover page, the table of contents page, which shows you all the things that are listed there. And then Valdosta's community work program, which is four or five pages. And then a copy of the future development map, which, as you know, shows our character areas, which we look at every time we have a resuming request. That's part of a county-wide mapping database of what you see there is the Valdosta environment, it shows our character areas within city limits, there you go. Uh, as well as the character areas immediately outside. This was another part of the focus for updates. For us, not very many changes at all. In two thousand and eleven, um, and if you missed, those of you who were on council at the time, may recall, we went through, we confined to cone district by district, made lots of changes in two thousand and eleven. And two thousand and sixteen, only a few little updates to it. And with this one, there are no changes other than what we processed as a character area, that you might recall the Silver Array, project out on Homer Avenue. That was first a character area change, that's shown on this map. So that was a change that we went through on its own. Uh, we had proposed some changes outside our city limits. Um, in partnership with Louts County, trying to coordinate their character areas on one side of the city limit line from ours. Uh, we had some proposed changes. The county, um, held a series of extra meetings starting in September where they were looking at this, um, under magnifying glass, at least with the northern parts of the county. Uh, they had some changes in mind. They made the decision not to change any of their character areas at this time. So the county portions remain unchanged. Once that was determined, we had the transmittal hearing in the last week of October. Uh, that was transmitted to DCA for a formal review. Interestingly, their review process normally takes sixty days. This time it took six days. Which basically means we as a community got a A-plus. We were given the green light to proceed with adoption. And so that's what brings us here this week. Hey, HARA adopted it, um, in fact, all six governments must adopt the comp plan update individually. And then once we all do that, the state is notified, the new comprehensive plan becomes official. Hey, HARA did that last week on Thursday night. Um, Louts County is supposed to be doing that, I think, this evening. Um, and then we will be number three. And all that will remain over three smaller municipalities. And we do not, at least I do not know yet where those states are. Many of them have had their local, um, council meeting already for the month of November. So they may be looking at the December adoption. So what's on our agenda is adoption by resolution of the twenty twenty-one comprehensive plan update.
Counsel, any questions?
I have one, I have a different question. Even though it's not much tech with, with the city. But I've heard you say that the county said they had decided they would not have to change any of their?
Not at this time, um, and I don't know if we're waiting on census data to come out when we get block level data. Uh, we're also about to do major updates to, you know, the transportation plan through the MPO, it's also a five-year process that comes about two years after us. With the new census data, urban area boundaries will change. The long-range planning of the MPO will be affected. Uh, my guess is they are waiting on some of that to be determined before they look at their maps. I was at the Louts County meeting, a lot of this was being talked about and had to speak um, about some of the issues with Hey, HARA. Um, it does, we can amend any part of the plan at any time once we adopt it, and that includes character areas um, for whole county or individual governments, community work program, which I've already put in on the schedule to begin again annually updating us, which means next summer, we get another crack at this chart. Um, but I really think we can continue the discussion of character area changes around the cities. Uh, because that's an issue we look at when we do annexation, and of course, infrastructure planning as well. Um, and the county commissioners seem open to having those discussions as we go over in the next few years.
Now, the reason I asked you that was that means that zoning the areas, that, that, does this mean that they won't be changing the zoning of the areas? The reason I asked you that, because I'm one of the meetings, and it was a big thing when it was changing the residential area and that was, we were saying, we were talking about the county was changing that, and that's why I was just wondering.
Yeah, um, interesting question. Um, there's one important difference between us and the rest of Louts County. When we consider a resuming request by our local ordinance, that request of a zoning change must be compliant with the character area. If it is not compliant according to the chart in the conference plan and the chart in our ordinance, then it is not eligible to be considered. For example, that Silver Array on Homer Avenue. The character area at that time did not allow industrial zoning. Which is why they went through the process to change the character area first to make it eligible for industrial zoning. And then when that was approved, they came back for the resuming. We are the only local government here that does that. Where we implement the land use policy in tiding with the land use law. The state recommends that we make land use decisions, resumings, based on adopted policy through the future development map and character areas. It is not a requirement of the state, it's simply a recommendation. So as a local government, the county or others can evaluate their policy with each land use decision that they make.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions for Matt? Yeah, that's, you got excited once you got to that.
It's, I've thought about it a long time. Um, to put it another nutshell, I like the way we do it.
Yeah, I agree.
Especially with a guy like you or, like, that. Item B, consideration of a resolution for the Georgia Municipal Association Certified City Ethics Program, Deputy City Manager, Captain Hamsel, present.
Good evening, Mayor Hamsel. So as the mayor said, I'm here to discuss the, uh, resolution, consideration of resolution for our GMA Certified City Ethics Program. Quick history, back in nineteen ninety-eight, they appointed a task force um, to address concerns over a trend of, um, people, citizens having less confidence in public officials. Um, after the task force was compromised, which was of elected officials, community members, industry leaders, GMA then, um, implemented the GMA Certified Ethics Program in ninety-nine. So under this program, um, certification is not in any way approval of past or present conduct by any city or city official. Currently, um, to earn the Certified City of Ethics designation, the city must take the following two actions: adopt a resolution establishing the five ethic principles to conduct our city, to conduct, um, city officials and adopt the, the ethics ordinance that meets some minimum standards approved by our GMA board. So currently, Valdosta is a certified city of ethics, and we're scheduled to receive, uh, to recertify in January of twenty twenty-two. In order to remain certified, the city must submit to GMA a review and approval copy of any changes to our ordinance since the initial certification, a resolution signed by the majority of the governing body, adopted the ethic principles. So to recertify, to be recognized, in our January twenty twenty-two session at the City United, uh, Cities United Conference, we must receive these two documents, or they must by January, by December one, twenty twenty-one. So we are asking that you guys approve the resolution as presented, the current ethics resolution, resolution and the ordinance which contains the prohibition and the processes that support these five guiding principles. And as we continue to work through our new ordinance, these five guiding principles will be included, although processes may change. Any questions?
Counsel. Counsel, thank you. I think you were landing.
I'm standing.
Consideration of a request from the Valdosta Long Island Airport Authority.
Okay, so the, um, Valdosta, uh, County Airport Authority desires to proceed with the cracked ceiling and re-marking over runway four twenty-two at our airport. The Georgia Department of Transportation has prepared a contract to cover approximately seventy-five percent of the cost and twenty-five percent would be from local airport funds. Uh, there will be no City of Valdosta funds required for this project. So GOT is for, G, the D-Dog, excuse me, is preparing a contract in the amount of fifty-two thousand ninety-eight dollars with thirty-eight cents for the project. The contract will be delivered to City Hall electronically, and it must be executed and returned to G-Dog, um, quickly. So I'm asking please for the approval of the resolution authorizing Mayor Matheson to accept the G-Dog contract in order to process the document.
Counsel, any questions, Captain? Or for me, since I'm sitting on every one of the airport authority meetings.
Well, I'll ask you this question. I knew you said that, uh, twenty-five percent, I believe, is coming from the local airport funds. So some of that is coming from the airport. So the city do provide the, uh, the airport that's out of our budget, don't we provide equal funds?
Yeah, equal amounts of the county's, the county's expenditure, we do this.
Yeah, all for now.
And then from ours, we also supply, um, fire and, um, police protection out there as well, um, to which we get reimbursed. So ours is pretty much a wash. Don't tell the county.
No. You give a party. Okay, thank you.
Our.
Any other questions, Counsel?
I should answer my question.
Uh, item B, consideration of a request from our airport authority, um, this time for federal aviation administration funds, again, part of the American Rescue Plan to assist in airport concession and economic recovery. Obviously, nobody was flying.
Right, so back in June of twenty twenty-one, the, our local airport, um, received eligible funds under ARPA. Uh, the purpose for these funds was to provide economic relief to airport concessioners in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. The airport desires to use this grant effectively and efficiently to its authorized areas. Those areas would be the budget and Avis car, um, franchises. So due to the way that the funds may be used as they are divided among large corporations and small, it is possible that not all the funds will be distributed. So the FAA has prepared a grant in the amount of thirty-seven thousand eight forty-nine for this effort. The grant will be delivered to City Hall and the agreement must be executed and returned to the FAA expeditiously. We are asking that you approve the resolution authorizing Mayor Scott Matheson to accept the grant.
Counsel, any questions? That, that was an easy one. I think there was really about three hundred people that actually, um, flew out of our airport and did for about a, about a four-month period of time, but it's normally four thousand, closer to four thousand.
Right, what a question, because I thought it was recently that they were giving some money for their concessions to do some upgrade for or something like that?
And I think they use it for Hertz, and this is for budget and Avis.
Because it's a different one.
This is a different, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Get ready for a big one, too, they're, they're installing a scanner out there, too.
Yeah.
All right, no further questions, Counsel? Uh, B, consideration again from our airport authority, Captain.
Yeah, so this is the same thing as I said before, back in June of twenty twenty-one, our airport, um, was eligible for ARPA funds. The amount for interairport was derived by using a formula developed not by us, but by the FAA, and it's being distributed through the normal FAA financial system. The amount allocated for our airport is one million two hundred seventeen thousand and seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. The grant does not require any local matching funds. So, um, our airport desires to use the grant, um, effectively and efficiently in the authorized areas. So the FAA is preparing a grant in the amount of the one million two hundred seventeen thousand seven, seven hundred forty-eight dollars for this effort. The grant would be delivered, as the other one, to City Hall, and the agreement must be executed, um, exponentially, expeditiously, excuse me. So we are asking that you please approve the resolution authorizing, uh, Mayor Scott to, um, accept the grant.
Would you go have, have fun, have to take the funds?
Yeah, so the funds right now, the way that they're going to or can be distributed is for
You said can be?
Yes, that they're allowed to be used would be for, um, operational expenses, um, debt services. They can be used to purchase a new HVAC system or a new heating, um, and air system. Anything to prevent and mitigate COVID or any other, um, health concern. What it can be used for is to build, say, a new runway. You can't use it for that.
Well, we are very controlled upon these points, I mean, it's been eager report, even though we, we are hoping for him to accept this.
Yes, yes.
That's why I find, that's why I find it so important to sit in on all those airport authority meetings. There's, there's.
Yes, and also, we will be, um, meeting with Jim, so if you guys, Jim Galloway, uh, if you guys have any questions or concerns, um, please send that to us, and we will be sitting with him to discuss the dispersed minimum funds for allocation.
Yeah, and one of the more exciting ones on that shopping list of, uh, I guess it's debt services, please. I think for tires and debt services, but that, that money, that is allowed. All right, any other questions? Captain, I think, uh, you did sit down. Item four, bid contracts and agreements and expenditures, consideration of a request for payment of emergency sewer system repairs, this was before us. Um, it was postponed at the October twenty-first meeting, they had finally, uh, cleaned that area up and can call it done. How much would it have cost? How much was it going to cost to do this?
Looking good. Yeah, this is, this stems from the collapse occurred back in late July. The part of the collapse was a crew that responded and noticed that the 24-inch main porcelain collapsed right through the Drizzle Park area. After further investigation, we noticed that a larger section of that was at risk of collapse, so we made a decision to go ahead and replace that entire section all the way across Patterson over to where the VSC property is. We had a contractor that was available at the time to bring out bypass pumps and had most of the materials available when we get to work. And we made this emergency repair situation. Came out, installed bypass pumps, and after creating some plans, developing some plans, and getting all the materials that were required, they broke ground in September and started to repair. They finished up the main part of the repair within the last couple of weeks. Basically, what they do have some finishing up, they did go on the Drizzle Park side, just some miter cleanup, and then finish up some sidewalk work. But for the most part, the main part of the work is complete. RPI submitted a, excuse me, glasses. So RPI submitted a request for payment for $562,384.10. And this is, this is covered, everything that's been done, and what continues to be worked on, sorry, sidewalks and that, so.
I think if this wasn't budgeted, when you had this in the budget, and how we paying for that?
The, this was, it wasn't in this year's budget. We actually had this in the section, making it identified to repair, the longer repair capital. This will repair, this will, the funds, we got funds that will take care of the emergency repair of this.
I still want to know what, what budget, though. Where would they come from? You say we have funds to cover that. That's one of the questions about that one. Where would the funds really, I'm just wondering, where would they come from? Do you know, do you know right offhand?
Right offhand, I don't know.
Okay, let me ask you one other question. Show me now.
Come on, come on forward, Joe.
Joe?
Joe knows everything.
We do have some contingency planning in slots, so a part of it will come from that. And as he mentioned, it was budgeted for work in future year. So it will, it will come out of slots, part of it will come from the contingency funds with this year, and part of it will be by rearranging our slots just a little bit. But most of it will be contingency that we had set aside for unforeseen circumstances such as this.
One other question. Do you know how far over the Dallas State, on the Dallas State campus side, would the, just be, not spiel, but they had to be, how far over do they have to go? Did it go like, spot down at the Fine Arts Building or where?
Yeah, they, they, there was a, there was a sewer crossing that crossed over the creek there. Basically, where the manhole, where the collapse was, there was a manhole not far from that on the Drizzle Park side, probably within 10 feet. So altogether, 422 feet of that, from that manhole at the Drizzle side over to the manhole 422 feet away on the VSC side.
You did manhole rehab as well?
Yeah, every manhole that was, was part of that sewer main was rehabbed. And actually, we replaced one of them.
So their monthly payment now is going to be, once they complete everything, we know we have nothing else.
Correct.
So if they get, all they do tonight is tidy it up.
Tidy it up, yes, ma'am.
Counsel, any other questions? Quite a shopping list when you look at the actual work that is done, that's right.
Was the VSC about any? Because, you know, they...
Like their system.
I think they're naked somewhere right now with us somewhere.
Yeah, they, they, if we're responsible for it, they pay us for it, so. For the ser, for the actual service, not the...
I just know this was some work at VSC, and I hear it's murder we have to wait until this time, so. I just, I think it's probably our contract.
It was, it was very lengthy, wasn't it?
It was, okay.
Item B, consideration of a request for purchase equipment for the Wiltokuchi wastewater treatment plant, David Woodwell.
This is for, replaced the brick removal system at the Wiltokuchi plant. Basically, what it is, consists of two 24-inch stainless steel units. These disc removal systems designed, they're roofing kind of grid or sand that's in the wastewater coming into the plant, and with it does, that protects any downstream piping, filters and what have you in the system. They, over the last several years, made numerous repairs on this. What they do is that great sand that's in there, real rough on the surfaces of the tanks. So they've made several repairs over the years. It's just got to the point where it's, it's got to be replaced. It's going to be more expensive, more of a life goal in trying to make the repairs. So staff went through, and they looked at various options as far as replacements, which we call teacups, and they're going to go basically with the same ones, got to go with the same ones, but due to the fact that it's the design for that particular plant. The only difference is that these will be, they'll have an internal coating that should protect the surface, the internal surfaces, and hopefully get a longer lifespan than what these last ones were. So with the, with these particular teacups, they're hydro international, which manufacturer and sole provider for the equipment, and they gave us a quote of $55,890.
That's your question, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Ever since I've been on council, something has been going wrong with the Wiltokuchi wastewater treatment. Do we ever just do a thorough check of everything there to see what is, what is old, what is new, what is in good place? Because every time I turn around, we're doing something with the wastewater.
We, we have a recurring maintenance plan, yes, ma'am, that we have a previous review through. We have a crew on site that stays on site, and they have a maintenance plan that they go through in the spare kits, and every piece of equipment has to be planned on a regular basis.
Could we get a printout of what they've done from 2016 up to now, that we do to wastewater treatment?
Just for, just for the plant itself?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, we can get that, of course.
I know they've done quite a bit over there.
Any other questions for David? All right, David, thank you. Item C, consideration of bids for the South Tomb Street for Nestor and Brutus Construction Project by Collins.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, so we have three sidewalk projects in a row here. The first one is South Tomb Street, and it will run from MLK from Martin and Junior Drive down to the...
Old Clack Road?
Yeah, Old Clack Road, thank you, sir. And so it's in District 2. But the, we went out, this project, it was, was originally designed, it's already been designed, out of the three, if I can kind of talk about all three of them, and I see them prepared. The, this one was previously designed, it was designed by Innovate, so we know exactly what the project, scope of work is going to be. The next two projects are design build projects, so we can give them faster, and that's how. On this particular job, the, we put it out for bid, and we came in with a bid of $181,200. And we're asking on this particular one that you approve a contract, a standard contractor, it's in the amount of $217,202. Now, I do want to point out that we're asking for 20% contingency on this one, on the other two, 10%. So I tried to, when you have a lower-priced project and you have a bunch of unknowns in older neighborhoods like this one, what I'm trying to do is prepare all three of them for you. The, basically, a 20% for the first project that I talked to you about tonight, that's about $22 a foot. If you look at the next two projects, it's 22 and 25, with the 20, 10%, because they're more expensive projects, okay? Does that make sense to everybody? So I'm just trying to say, that's why I asked for 20% of this and 20, 10% of the others. So on Thursday evening, we'll be asking that you award a contract to standard contractors in a total amount of $217,202.40. And that will be for sidewalk on the east side of Tomb Street. There is a map up there. Want to go on to the next one, or are there any questions on that?
Any questions on this one project? Obviously, we looked at the west side, at the east side, and then it's angry. You, you and the rest of the Greek side, you better, correct? Yes, that would launch the, the South Tomb.
Okay, so the next one is the bids for Smith Street. This will run from Brook Haven Drive, there, the right over by where the football, the softball, oh, yeah, soccer field is, and it'll run down to West Gordon Street. And this is over in District 3. This particular project will build sidewalk along the west side of the street. And it was really recommended, because, you know, the children go to school down there, and there's no sidewalk, so, you know, the police department was really pushing for this one, and so that's what this project's about. And again, we're recommending that this will be a design build project. And the low bid was submitted by standard contractors, in the amount of $314,890. We're asking for 10% this time contingency. So we're asking on Thursday evening that you approve the contract to standard for $346,379.
You, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Normally, we use slots dollars exclusively for these type of projects, but I noted in this one that we're also utilizing some CDPG. Is that because of state rival schools, perhaps?
No, it's, it's the, it's the money that the NASA has is eligible to be spent towards this. And quite frankly, that's, this is a perfect project because it's in that underserved area that the gentleman was talking about earlier, and we can use that type of money for that. So in order to save for slots dollars, we're going to put 150 of it into this project. Okay, and the third project is to finish up Pope Street. We've done a lot of Pope Street, the south end of the city, all the way up. We stopped last at Alden. This will go from Alden Drive on up to Gorton. This one's in District 6. Yet, again, the low, the low, it's a design build like the others. The low bid came in from standard contractors, in the amount of $472,101. We're asking for 10% contingency, or a total of $519,311.10. This particular sidewalk will be on the east side of the road. If you recall, there at Alden and Gorton, you can see where the sidewalk stops, it's on the east side. We're going to continue with up to Gorton. Gorton, I'm sorry. Any questions?
Counsel? All right, thank you. Counsel, your faculty will also see what you have. Some appointments to the boards, commissions, authorities, and advisory committees. Please lift those over, be ready for Thursday. There's some good people that have stepped up to those positions as well. Counsel, anything else you'd like to discuss tonight? Before we ask Sonny for... I'm going, I'm going to start. Say, okay. I'm the voice, I'm the chairman. You sure do. Second. I'll be there. Thank you, everybody. Darren, hold on a second. You go second, I can say, hold on for a second. Sure.